You good?
Oh.
Can you, can you hear, can you, is sound being recorded? Excellent. Well, welcome everyone to the Lincolnville Selectmen's Meeting. It is the 12th of September. Before we get going, Selectmen hand, would you care to read a quote of the evening?
Sure thing. "I think all human beings are equal, but one has to unceasingly fight hard to maintain that equality." Roberto Clement.
Thank you so much. And at this point, I would like to open the podium for any non-agenda items for the Citizens Forum. Seeing no one rushing up to the podium or jumping up and down, let's move along to the Administrator's Report.
It's me. Sorry. Just want to let you know, we thus far, we've received in excess of eighty property tax stabilization for senior citizen program. That program for anybody that's listening at home is available through, applications have to be in by December 1st. They're available on town website, paper copy, state domain website, any place you possibly can look for one. Happy to assist people in any way in completing that application. People that have already applied, we're about ready to commence with processing those. So you will, if you've applied, you'll receive a letter saying you're in, or you're, could be in if you completed this right, or you'll get some sort of determination from us in the coming weeks in ample time. So if you need to make a correction before December 1st, you'll have time to do that. We're not going to tell you on December 2nd you didn't make it because you didn't date your application or something like that. Winter sand is up and in the building. We still have some cleanup left to do in the yard over there before we make final payment. Penobscot Park is open as of the end of last week with temporary signage up. Had some usage over the weekend. That is open and available to the public. The recreation floats, the swim floats have been brought into shore so that they can be removed now that, well, as of Wednesday when summer actually kind of tries to end. The direct committee did that. And finally, absentee ballots won't be available till early in October, but you can apply for absentee ballots now. And when those are here, we'll be sending those out. Or you can vote here in the town office when ballots will be available, at least thirty days prior to Election Day. There's the behind the scenes proofing ballot, sending ballots, getting programming and whatnot going on. So I think that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, besides the fact to say apologies to the citizenry for being shut down for two days a couple of weeks ago. I think everybody managed to get through it except for me answering the phones, but we're back.
Nicely done. And I'd be remiss to say that Selectman Garrettson is excused for tonight's meeting due to he and his family having the newest future Select Board member. So congratulations to Josh and his wife.
A lot of pressure on you.
Let's move along to upcoming meetings and announcements.
All meetings are here in the town office unless announced otherwise. The Heart and Soul Team, should they be appointed tonight, will be meeting tomorrow, September 13th. Uh, not tomorrow. Yeah, tomorrow, September 13th, 7:00 PM at the community building. Sorry, my mind's toast. Cemetery trustees are scheduled to meet Wednesday, September 14th at 5:30. Planning Board is scheduled to meet Wednesday, September 14th, 7:00 PM. Comprehensive Plan Review Committee is scheduled to meet Wednesday, September 21st at 7:00 PM. And the Board of Selectmen is scheduled to meet next on Monday, September 26th, 6:00 PM.
Thank you very much. And are there any upcoming community events anyone wishes to share? Seeing nothing, let's move along to the meeting minutes from August 22nd.
I move that the Board approve the August 22nd, 2022 meeting minutes as presented.
So moved?
I'll second that, but I've got an amendment.
186?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, line 186, the motion passed on a R dash zero vote.
Yeah, so we might, we might want to change that to a number.
So I believe that that would have been four.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was.
So do you care to amend?
I would like to amend my motion.
And I'll second that.
Excellent.
amended motion.
Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? Thank you all very much. And moving along to Agenda Item Number Seven, we have a liquor license renewal before us for the Young Town Inn and Restaurant being put forth by Camino LLC. I believe we do have representatives here tonight. Does anyone wish to ask them any questions? If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the Board approve and sign the liquor license application submitted by Camino LLC, doing business as the Young Town Inn.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Thank you all very much. And thank you so much for popping in tonight. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the evening.
It gets better and better, yeah.
And we'll have the liquor license here, or we can mail it to you, whatever you want tomorrow. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you all. And then we have some community interest forms here before us for a variety of different things. We do have Mr. Brown here in the audience. Does anyone wish to ask Mr. Brown any questions?
Tell us about it.
Would you care to come up to the podium and introduce yourself, please?
For you, that don't know, I'm Earl Brown. I was on the Planning Board before, Land Use Committee before that, and most recently the Selectmen. And I was on the Planning Board with Mike. Yeah, I just thought I'd go back on, something to do.
Okay. That was, that was going to be my next question is what's, what's motivating you to get, get back in the hot seat? Excellent, any other questions for Earl?
Earl, thank you for having interest in the town. Appreciate it.
Wonderful. We can release you from the hot seat now. Thank you. Fair enough. So I will entertain a motion, please.
I move to appoint Earl Brown as a regular member to the Planning Board with a term expiring June 2023.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Thank you all very much. And we have a nice showing of interest for the newly created Heart and Soul Team. We have a number of citizens here who have expressed interest in it. And does anyone wish to interview any of these individuals? And if not, we can start with the first motion.
I move to appoint Susan Silberio to the Heart and Soul Team with a term expiring June 2023.
Second.
Moved and well seconded, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Thank you all very much. And we have a second application. I don't see the applicant here, but that is not necessarily an impediment, so I will entertain a motion.
I move to appoint Lynn Travis Stanchi off to the Heart and Soul Team with a term expiring in June 2023.
So moved?
Second.
Seconded, discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? I will entertain a third motion.
I move to appoint James Dunham to the Heart and Soul Team with a term expiring June 2023.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Thank you all very much. And I will entertain a fourth motion.
I move to appoint Cynthia Dunham to the Heart and Soul Team with a term expiring June 2023. Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Thank you all very much. And a fifth motion with regards to the Heart and Soul Team.
I move to appoint Bob Olson to the Heart and Soul Team with a term expiring June 2023.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Thank you all very much. And a final motion for interest tonight on the Heart and Soul Team.
I move to appoint Mike Ray to the Heart and Soul Team with a term expiring in June 2023.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Thanks for volunteering, Mike.
Oh, sure.
There's no further discussion, all those in favor?
I'm going to abstain.
Abstain, okay, thank you very much. And thank you all so much for
Just like that, eh?
The interest and, and coming in. Are you going to keep us company? It's all.
Yes, of course it is, of course it is.
That's not an excuse, we'll get you home.
And
Thank you.
See you later. See you tomorrow.
Northeast Mobile Health had made a request to come and present their latest update. And we have a representative here tonight to speak with the Board and answer any questions. Come on up.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me, appreciate it. I was at home at the podium for reporting purposes, Eric.
Well, and so all of the folks watching at home can participate.
So it's been a while since our, the EMS Quality Committee has met. So I wanted to, actually now that we're on the backside of COVID, take the opportunity to come out and introduce myself to all of the Select Boards. Now, for those of you who don't know me, my name's Jonathan Powers. I'm a paramedic and a Division Chief for the Rockport Division of Northeast Mobile Health Services. A little bit about me is I've been in EMS for about twenty-two years, primarily in the Knox County, Waldo County area and Lincoln County, Mid Coast region. I've spent fourteen years of that as a paramedic. I have a fair amount of field experience as well as administrative experience. I spent ten years with the Regulatory Commission or the Board that oversees EMS, working in both a regulatory capacity as well as a data management capacity. So a fair amount of experience that I hope to bring to you as your, your EMS Director for the four towns. Hoping that everybody got a copy of the presentation. I'm not going to kill you with the presentation. That was really a lot of talking points, bullet points for you to review. Hopefully, I think the data will cover or speak for itself. And if you're, of course, any questions as I go through some of these pieces, please interrupt and ask me questions. I did want to provide a little bit of update about our current status with our staffing. Always a concern, as we see in the newspaper, that there we are always looking for more help. EMS nationwide is truly struggling right now with more folks leaving than we're bringing in. COVID had a significant impact on that. Not only did a lot of our senior and tenure folks go, "I'm out, see ya, I'm done with this stuff. I've already done with my, my fair share of pandemics, not another one." We lost a lot of that education, we lost a lot of that experience. And we also didn't have the ability to run classes. So that really hurt our system in the, in the long run, where we weren't able to meet, have classes and bring some of that experience back to the field. So we are scrambling a little bit right now for staffing, but the good news is for you is that my staffing is holding pretty strong. I am very proud of the team that we have assembled and we maintain now. And as you can see, I do have four, I'm sorry, six full-time EMTs. We have two openings for EMTs, if you know of anybody who would like to take a class. We do offer an Earn While You Learn program where we bring staff on full-time and then put them through EMT school, which is a new program that we started offering in this last year. And try to encourage folks into the, into the field. We have three advanced EMT providers, they're all full-time staff. We have two per DMs as well that pick up plenty of shifts. And I have the full, five full-time paramedics, two per DM as well as myself. I do, I am a working chief. I am not an administrative chief, and I will continue to work as long as my back will hold out. For twenty-two years, I'm starting to feel it, but I've still got a few good ones left. We haven't met in quite a while, so a little bit of update on, on the vaccine mandates. EMS has now required EMS to have numerous vaccines, not just the COVID-19. That was the big one that really hit the newspapers was a lot of contention around getting the COVID-19 vaccine. We were fortunate, I did not lose a single staff member to that mandate. And we continue to work through some of the new mandates, which now include the flu vaccine as well. So a little more contention than we weren't expecting out of the flu vaccine, but hopefully it'll, it'll work out in the end. So a hundred percent of my staff were, were vaccinated in December of 2020. I can thank that to a great working relationship with Winwood Gardens. They invited us in in the first round of vaccinations before the EMS vaccinations were available. So we actually were able to get in before any of the other public safety personnel in the area. A hundred percent of my staff were immediately boosted as well. As soon as that booster became available, all of my staff were in line. So we're very fortunate that we are now at a hundred percent. Coincidentally, most of my staff have also had COVID. So they have more antibodies in their system than I think they know what to do with, and we should be pretty much impermeable to anything else. And as I mentioned before, vaccinations are now mandated by me and EMS. So, and I think in the future, we'll see more vaccines become part of that requirement of holding a license. As we go through EMTs, our first level of EMS training, which is EMT, we're required to have most of these vaccinations before we can even start clinicals. And that includes the hepatitis series, MMR, tetanus, all of the fun stuff that we all did as kids. We have to make sure that all of that is boosted and hepatitis. So as far as our staffing goes, we do maintain most of the time. We do still have occasionally those openings, but most of the time, three ambulances during the day. As you see, we maintain two 24-hour trucks as well as a third 12-hour truck during the busy hours, as well as a little bit of overlap, so that we can try and get our staff out on time as, as often as we can. We also have a fourth truck that we do keep in, stocked and ready. Staff that for events, or if I'm able to come up with a partner, they usually staff it with me. And we are able to put a fourth truck on the road quite often. And then I also have the supervisor fly car, which I will also first respond in if I don't have a partner. If during the day and I'm in the office, then I'll respond to that. I am available if anybody wants to stop in, check out the base, come in and see the trucks, see our operations. I'm usually there Monday through Friday, eight to four, at a very minimum. Sometimes more of, more often than not, more often, if you ask my family. So as, sorry to mention our fleet, we do have the five trucks. We have four fairly new ambulances. You can see our oldest is a 2016, so we are maintaining a very healthy fleet. Right now, we are starting to look to replace the 2016. And if anybody's been following in newspapers, the vehicle shortages and the chip shortages and all that fun stuff, the American Ambulance Association right now is actually petitioning, trying to change the priority of the chips so that it moves towards ambulances and fire trucks. Because right now, we are on a two-year waiting list to replace 2020, which is the most appropriately numbered truck ever. It certainly lives up to its number. It has its, it's its own series and range of issues, but in keeping it on the road, it's a very reliable truck. But it is due to be replaced. We replace our trucks at roughly 350,000 miles, which we do rack up in about five years per truck. So we put on a fair amount of mileage, especially when you're covering, and just a coverage area this size can be, can put, can just definitely rack up the miles. And then the 2011 Fly Car is due for replacement as well. Hoping to see that sometime before I retire. But the way the chips are going, I don't see that happening. As I said, to replace that ambulance, we're on a two-year waiting list, just to get a chassis. So it's quite the backlog. A lot of agencies that are starting to plan are pushing two to four years out as they start to plan and budget, particularly some of the municipal agencies that need to look towards that. And right now, for, for those folks, budgeting can be an issue as well. They jumped, almost doubled in price since we bought 2307, which was two hundred last year. So they've gone from about $135,000 to roughly $300,000. So, yeah, it's crazy, absolutely crazy. So just some of the initiatives that we had around the area. In 2021, we did a lot of vaccination initiatives with the, the help of David. I can't speak highly enough about his, his efforts to, to get the vaccination clinics here. We're happy to help out in every way that we could. We did vaccinate about 490 folks here in the town of Lincolnville. And a lot of those folks were from away. I still think we managed to get half the town, but there was a lot of folks, I mean, they're traveling for a farm wide. We had folks from Dover Foxcroft, from Westbrook, from Durham. It was amazing how far folks were traveling and coming into our little area to get a vaccination. So we're very happy to be able to participate in being, be invited to that in this area. We did vaccinate about 585 folks total in the area, which kind of a drop in the bucket, but it was still necessary at the time. And we're happy to help out whenever we can with those types of initiatives. This is the third mass vaccination that I've been through. I remember H1N1 being just as much fun, we had to go into all the schools and do all the kids. And I was partially expecting that again this year, but thankfully, the pediatricians are keeping up with the children's vaccinations. So just some additional initiatives that we're working through is we're really boosting our service level quality assurance. So really taking a hard look at the care that we're providing and making sure that we're doing the best that we can with all the, and providing all of the resources we can. We brought in a new medical director, Jonathan Bosco. He's a tenured physician with St. Joe's Hospital in Bangor. He would also serve on the Medical Directions and Practices Board for the main EMS. Very active in EMS, I believe was a paramedic prior to going to medical school. Very active with us. He is taking an active participation in reviewing charts, looking at all of our cardiac arrests to see how we can possibly perform better, as well as any of our routine stuff. When I say routine, but our other emergency response type calls to see what we can do better. And we've already learned a lot from him. It's only been the better part of eight months, but he's been very active in our division. We also hired on the Quality Assurance Director, Stephen Almquist. He does do the entire, entire company, all five divisions. But 911 had, because of our contract, we do have some particular, specific benchmarks we need to maintain, which is our chest pain reviews, our spinal assessment protocol reviews, some of those other items that are in the, the contract. But more, what we're focused on right now is our patient refusals, which is a very high-risk situation where we don't transport a patient, we leave them to their own faculties at home, and making sure that those decisions are appropriate and making sure that the patient is left in the safest possible situation. So we're taking a, a hard look at that. I'm pleased to say that most of that's looking really good right now. I already mentioned the focus reviews. And we're also doing regular reviews with the providers, so they're learning from that. And then as I said, we're, we're also focusing on some training around the high-risk, low-frequency things like, paramedics are capable of performing a cricothyroidotomy in the field. We don't do those that often. In twenty-two years, I've seen three perform two. So we don't do it that often. And those are the types of things that we want to make sure that our paramedics are prepared for and all of our providers are prepared for, making sure that our equipment is up to snuff and that they're familiar with that. So we're really taking a hard focus on that. Another initiative that I'm, I'm spearheading in our area is a project for the National Quality Assurance Initiative, which is a focus around the use of lights and sirens. Believe it or not, even though thanks to Hollywood, everyone thinks that lights and sirens are necessary to get to every call, every time the ambulance leaves the barn. But unfortunately, it comes a risk with that. An ambulance is a 65% risk, a higher risk of getting into a crash whenever they use lights and sirens. It may not be at their fault, maybe just nobody sees them, they zig when you're expecting them to zag, and making sure that my staff are operating appropriately. So this initiative is designed to really take a hard look at our protocols and procedures and making sure that we're providing resources at the, at the best level for the type of call and at the rate. In our particular area, using lights and sirens only saves about a minute, minute and a half. So when you're looking at the risk to the public, the crew, the patient, the utilization of lights and sirens really doesn't pay off a whole lot, and it's such a kind of a small area. When you're talking about a transport to main med, you can shave about eighteen minutes off. A little bit more, you know, impressive savings, but still weighing that risk versus the benefit. So we are participating in the, in that data collection right now. And we've already modified some of our protocols to, to improve our response. Under the Response Assignment Plan, we do utilize the Medical Priority Dispatch System, which is provided by Knox RCC. So that every time, every time someone, a citizen calls 911, they receive the same instructions, the same care, no matter where they are in the state domain, it's a single statewide system that is provided. And that system is, anybody remember Rescue 911 with William Shatner? Remember that show? Where you'd stand there next to the console, all buff and William Shatner. You'd have those cards next to them, and the dispatcher would be pulling down these cards and they'd keep flipping through those. It's a very early version of that, but that was the Medical Priority Dispatch System. And it's designed so that they ask specific questions based off of what the caller says. So they have a script, basically, that they utilize, and they can code that call and identify what level of care. Now, you may recall from our contract that we do have specific benchmarks for Charlie, Delta, and Echo calls. Well, that comes specific, comes from those protocols. So the dispatcher asks those questions, they get the answers that they're looking for, and then they code it and provide it either that Alpha, Bravo, Charlie, Delta level response. And our Response Assignment Plan sets what, how our crews will respond to those calls. So Omega and Alpha are two of the lower priority, lower life risk calls. Not to say they're not important, because they are. A lot of those are, you know, your falls, they can't get up, they, but they don't have any life-threatening injuries or life-threatening symptoms. So certainly something we want to get to, we don't want to put that off. But sitting there for 25 minutes with an ankle fracture is going to be pretty uncomfortable, even if it is considered low life risk. But we can get there safer by going to the lights and sirens. And making sure the crew gets there rather than getting into a crash and not getting there at all. So making sure that our crews are making those, those decisions and getting those protocols out there. So with any luck, you'll start to see my trucks moving a little bit slower. Maybe not with lights and sirens, but still with a, with a sense of urgency to get to wherever they're going.
Does that mean your response, the criteria for your response time is going to change in the, in the contract to the town?
We already did a little bit. If I remember correctly, we changed the benchmarks to Charlie, Delta, and Echo level calls, the life-threatening responses. We took out the Omega, Alpha, and Bravo, if I remember correctly. But we're also looking at, looking away from those benchmarks from the last contract. I'm going to talk about it in a second, where we moved to the 95th percentile in reviewing those calls and making sure that our response times aren't getting much higher in reviewing why it's taking so long to get to certain areas. Some of those have been directly related. Because in the 95th percentile, I still include, I still include the Omega, Alpha, and Bravo calls. So even with those in there, we're not seeing a huge increase. I was, I was a little more concerned this summer, particularly with the, the construction through Camden and the bottleneck, the normal bottleneck, and then you add construction to it. But it didn't seem to be a significant, a significant change. So I was pretty happy to see that. My crews have also, as they get a little more familiar with the area, know the backwoods.
Route 90 is a mess now. You, you just, even with lights and sirens.
I'll tell you the worst.
They got it blocked.
All summer, the worst was Hanaford, right there by Hanaford. The whole time they were doing those, those poor guys, I don't know highway times, they jumped out of the way.
The thing with that, though, is they had two lanes.
Yeah.
And traffic was moving over on Route 90. They were doing it one lane, and it's, you can't get through.
It's, it's That's been a challenge, 52 or 105. Right by Bob Bridge was a little bit of a challenge too, because there's no good sightlines. So even as we approached that intersection, there was no good sightlines, so. And there's nowhere to go. So that was, you know, another important part of making sure that we're utilizing our lights and sirens appropriately. Because there is that risk. You know, if we go into those construction zones and those guys either aren't prepared or somebody makes a bad decision because they're staring at us instead of the poor flag that's in front of them. You know, I'd hate to see something happen to them too. With the, as we go into the contract, kind of some of the contract deliverables, one of the things we did look at was the response zones. That was one of my, my first projects. Instead of having it broken down by just the individual town, breaking it into different sections. Because obviously, the response to duck trap is a little bit longer than getting to Lincolnville Center or to getting to North Lincolnville up on 52 and Belfast Line. That can skew some of those numbers. And as we look towards the 95th percentile and try to identify what should our benchmarks be, breaking it down by those zones. So we can get a little more granular and, and really focus on where we should be focusing our effort. If it is, you know, the Zone 3 area, which is the North Lincolnville area, then maybe we need to start looking at our routes, making sure my staff are trained on the fastest routes, because the GPS isn't always the best. And I still have some folks that rely pretty heavily on that. They know the area, but they still rely a little bit on the GPS. And sometimes it'll bring you up 52 instead of taking you out East Fork and, and depending on And sometimes it'll bring you up fifty-two instead of taking you out East Fork and and depending on which side of town it's on, maybe a little faster to go the back one, uh backroads. So um we'll focus a little bit on on familiarization of the area, um and those types of things, all things that can come out of these numbers. But um the other thing that the zones did was it allowed us to better identify and um better utilize our mutual aid. So in situations where we aren't available to respond, if we're already tied up on one, two, or three calls already, and we have to contact another agency to respond to, say, Lincolnville. Um, we can send the closest appropriate, because Rockland is not the closest appropriate to get to North Lincolnville, to get to the Belfast line. That's a long ways out of their area, it's a long response time, and more often than not, those patients go to Waldo County. So sometimes our citizens weren't able to go to the hospital they wanted to because our mutual aid said, no, we need to get back to our area, we're we're taking you to Pen Bay. So this had a lot of things that we looked at. We looked at response times, we looked at proximity to where they are to that area. We also looked at the the hospitals that those areas primarily responded to. So with all that data, we're in zones three and four, we broke into the more of the Waldo County uh services, because most of those patients go to Waldo County. And that's where, that's how we came to the delineation of these areas, was mostly on patient preference of hospital and looking at five to six years' worth of data. Um, so a lot of effort went into breaking these zones out. Um, Hope was pretty easy, we went back to the old school, um when it was split between the two agencies, we just kept the two zones. And then Rockport, uh we've broken into four zones as well, because in certain areas, um Union's closer than Rockland is, and um we can we can better utilize those services, so. Any questions on any of those items so far? Trying not to blow through it either, so I don't wanna, so if you have any questions, please, please stop me at any time. So as we get into kind of the nine one one responses for last year, we did see a huge uptick in in our responses. Um, as you see over the last three years, we had twenty-twenty when everybody was like, oh my god, our call volume's way down. Ours was actually up a little bit compared to the following year. The following year, we got hit pretty hard with the decreased number, um but this year, they definitely made up for the previous two years. Um, responding to one thousand eight hundred and fourteen calls in our total coverage area is a lot of calls. We're now currently right around fifty-fifty with nine one one versus our transfer side. So we're doing the same number of transfers as we are emergencies. Um, right now, we're seeing a a bigger uptick in uh transports out of Waldo County. Um, so we're actually going up to Belfast a fair amount, because some of the agencies up there just don't have staffing either. Um, so we're trying to to help out where we can, adding more staff, adding another truck, increasing our hours on some of those trucks, um so that we can move move some of their more critical patients as well. Um, so we're on both sides now of Lincolnville, so we've actually had some time where we've we've gone up to Belfast, responded to the backside of Lincolnville a lot faster. Um, which has really helped my top my numbers, but now I was about to help the citizen get care a lot faster. And then they ultimately ended up back at Waldo County to do the transfer, um so it worked out pretty well, um and all those. So as I said in the, I think, the numbers, we also saw a little bit of uh increased mutual aid that we 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 provided uh versus what we called for. Um, we're about the same for what we're utilizing versus what we're providing um last year, which was a a nice change. So I won't, uh, as I said, I won't go through all each of these slides, but if there's any of the the information on these slides and you have questions about, please, uh let me know. Um, I'll pick out some of the highlights, just, you know, that we provided. Um, some of the biggest things, paramedic response was always a big thing, um as I recall, through the contract uh discussions. Um, you can see that ninety-five point six percent of all of our calls received a paramedic. So we had a paramedic on a good majority of the calls, and then ninety-nine point two percent of the Charlie, Delta, and Echo. And in the contract, we are allowed a little bit of a buffer space, I believe it goes down to about ninety-five percent, um that we can, that we have to provide a paramedic on, and we are far exceeding that. Pretty happy with the the effort and the extra that my team is putting in to make sure that our trucks are staffed and that they're staffed to the highest level possible. Um, as far as call types, you'll see that gravitational disturbances still top the numbers. Thankfully, not a lot of those folks were injured, but um it does still seem to be a a high utilization of nine one one. Um, we've ta- we're starting to take a look at how we can maybe prevent some of those and start working on some of our fall prevention programs again. Um, I know there already is a program with the trauma centers, and we're looking to tap into that and maybe start bringing some of those resources down to this area. Um, we still can't identify whether it's the plates or if it's just a increased uh gravitational pull in this area, but.
So so I've, how about distributing free cleats, ice cleats?
And the creepers?
Yeah, the creepers, yeah.
I wish it was ice.
Pardon?
It's not even ice.
Well, hey, no, I I I I slipped on mud uh this year, the the week after the ice went out and broke my ankle, yeah.
We we just never know when it's gonna strike.
John, I I know it takes, you put together these reports, correct?
Yep.
And so you're also doing fieldwork and compiling all of this information and getting it out to all of our partner towns. Um, my big question, after having looked at years of these. Um, and where where is the review committee in terms of uh participation with our other communities? Do we know if we have full participation from our other towns yet?
I know Rockport just aside, just um uh brought on a new member, I know uh Suckman Kelly and terrible names, I'm sorry, I'm HIPAA compliant by design.
But they have two.
They do have two, Rockport has two, Hope has two, Lincolnville has two. I don't know the status of Camden, I know they were, they were awaiting the special town meeting um to appoint to their board, as I recall, is that?
I think that's Rockport.
Yeah, that was Rockport, yeah.
That was Camden, I'm sorry. Um, so I don't know where they stand, to be honest.
Okay, I guess my question is, is that, you know, it's been a very long time since we've had a meeting. And I know that those, you built those meetings into the contract so that you can get timely and useful feedback from the partnership, partnering community. So what can we as a board do to help you encourage our next meeting, which is in a month-ish?
I think it's the end of October.
Yeah.
Yeah. To to actually get it to happen.
That's a great question, um because it's been participation, um for the la- the last two have been canceled due to participation.
Right.
Um, just folks not being available. We weren't available for one of them because three of our members were out with COVID.
Sure.
Not from my base.
It has been, it has been a consistent issue with other towns, though, that they just simply haven't appointed either interim members or members at all.
Well, it had them, and then there was the, there was the election, and I think a couple of those seats changed.
Yeah.
But prior to that, I'm pretty sure we had full membership. Um, but it was just, it, I think, the last, last one at least was due to participation, and prior to that was due to COVID exposures. And that was the first one we were gonna do in person.
Yeah.
So we chose to put the brakes on that one.
Yeah, 'cause the com- and the committee hasn't yet adopted any sort of remote meeting policy, so that's also a problem, yeah. Um, the last, the board had a conversation about you and me drafting a letter, and I think we were waiting for those elections to happen. So I gue- I guess we'll get back on that effort of reaching out to our neighboring communities so that hopefully a month is enough time to have everyone get together to be able to have a conversation.
Big thing that would be helpful, at least for me, for those meetings, is knowing what the boards would like to see for information. Like what's in, what is important to each of the towns to know? Um, you know, this this report is a is a good annual overview, in my opinion, but some of you might glaze over reading this, and it may not be as important and leave you with questions. Um, and that's, data's great, I love data, I was a data guy, loved pulling data, but unless you have the right audience for that data, it's just numbers on a page. So I'd really like to get some feedback from the, you know, after seeing this report, and then if there are any questions that come up in your in your minds over the next few days, weeks, months, at any time, really. Um, you see, I'm I'm happy to share the data. Um, so if there's something that comes to mind later on, you just wanna see what it is, I can probably pull it a couple of days, um and compile it. Um, but it would be nice to know, especially with the with the Performance Review Committee, I mean, I'm I'm going off of the contract, but there may be other things that that committee can look at, um which I think would be important, so.
And perhaps if things come up for this board, if nothing pops to mind right now, Steve and I can bring it to our next review committee meeting, which we will have. I know I say, I say this every quarter, but it's gonna happen.
Well, I do have a question.
Sure.
And that has to do with uh North Lincolnville, the Lincolnville three district. You said you're taking them up to Waldo County. Uh, is that uh to all people and and go up to Waldo County?
The majority, yeah.
Okay, the majority?
Yep, majority, yeah.
They have a choice?
Yep, absolutely, yeah. You know, state protocol is closest appropriate facility. Because now, appropriate does not always mean the closest facility. Um, I've al- I've argued that from my entire career, is that it's not always just convenience and and proximity. Sometimes the closest appropriate is knowing that Waldo County's CT scanner is down, and taking that stroke patient to Waldo County is not in their best interest, and we need to go to Pen Bay. Or all their, before the electronic medical record system, um their records were at Pen Bay. Best place for them to go was back at Pen Bay where they had their records, instead of having to wait for those things to be faxed up. That's not a lot, not really an issue anymore, I mean, everything's virtual, so.
Yeah.
Um, you know, so they have a choice. Um, now, we will discourage things like Eastern Maine.
Yeah, yeah.
Because they're all, you know, the community hospitals can provide the bulk of the stabilizing care, and sometimes they just don't need to go to that far. Um, you know, and um thankfully, we haven't been asked for that in a lo- quite a while, lock on wood. Um, but now we do get into those. The only other place that we get a lot of requests for that we just can't transport to, unfortunately, is Togus. Um, we have a lot of our veterans that would really prefer to stay within the Togus healthcare system, and honestly, we would love to have them stay in Togus healthcare system too, because it's designed for them. Um, the coverage could be really wonky outside of that. So um unfortunately, the urgent care at Togus just is not licensed to a level where we're allowed to transport to at this time. Um, and that, for here, we don't get that many requests, but when I was working at like, you know, for Walderboro EMS, um we went to Jefferson, Togus is right there. And it would have been so convenient to be able to tend to transport those patients just for them, because they were close to home, um easy access, but we're just unfortunate.
Ah, it's too bad.
Any other questions for John, yeah?
Yeah, uh, do you have aspirations of expanding more in this area?
We would always entertain.
Looking at your data, it looks like you could use another hub somewhere.
It wouldn't hurt.
But I do realize that you're, you know, everybody's having trouble keeping people, getting people, keeping them, and getting the right people. So I realize that that's an issue, but you've mentioned partners out this way. I would assume Sears Pol- uh Sears Monde and probably Belfast?
Yep, we utilize Belfast and Sears Monde on our mutual aid agreements.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, we've looked at, um, I mean, as many of you may know, um, Appleton did approach us this last year, um to see, to look at options. Um, ultimately, they chose to stay with Union just due to proximity. Um, now, we do provide some higher level services more often, um Union's a perfectly fine service. Don't, please don't take it as I'm I'm bashing them at all.
No, yeah.
Um, I was the assistant director for Union for years, um and lived with Union, so perfectly happy with the service we have. Um, but as we start to look towards resources and and the way that EMS resources, our fire resources are all really starting to dry up. We're all kind of hurting to find the bodies to put in the seats. Um, we need to start looking at regionalization. Um, as you've seen probably in the paper, Pen Bay Pilot, Chief White Talk put out another, uh pleading to get regionalization talks started, um because we're already behind the eight ball. Um, now, where we're excelling is we're already regionalized. Our four towns have already chosen a regionalized system. What we need to start encouraging other towns to do is accept some of those things that they're gonna have to give up, um response times. You know, as we start to look to response times, are response times really as important as we think they are? Or is it just, let's get better resources or the higher level resources to that patient instead of necessarily making sure that they're to, somebody's there in twelve minutes? What we aspire to do is is to start to expand on some of those services that we can provide without transport. Um, we have a project right now in Jackman, um that the paramedic is up there, is responding, they're, we call them physician extenders. Um, or I'm trying to think what the actual official term is, um but they're critical access integrated paramedics, the CAPE program. And where they're able to provide stitching on scene. So if you have somebody with a laceration, they can stitch them up, they have contact with a physician who can say, yep, you're all set, great job, that's exactly what they need, go ahead and give them some antibiotics too, we'll call it a day. They don't need to go to the hospital. Um, some other things there that provide is home visits, they're, you know, kind of similar to if you're familiar with our, what our community paramedicine program was designed to do. The CAPE takes it to another level, where they're doing the home visits, checking in on folks, doing the follow-ups, making sure they're taking their medications. But they're also responding to emergencies and and ultimately having a discussion with the physician, having the physician uh virtually and involved with the patient's care and determining an appropriate care plan from there, which may ultimately lead to not transporting them. Um, so, uh, keeping them in the community, keeping them safe at home, making sure that that's the appropriate care for them. Um, and one of my slides, you may have seen that we have, we saw a significant uptick in the low acuity um calls, where we're responding to over fifty percent of our calls are those Alpha, Bravo, lower acuity. Uh, received only BLS level care. The idea behind the CAPE paramedic would be that they would provide that higher level of care for some of those patients that are on that border line, kind of that gray area. Yeah, you gas your leg, but you need stitches. Maybe we'll provide that in in the field. Being able to provide ultrasound in the field, being able to provide laboratory results in the field, those are the things that are really going to bolster and and really strengthen a regionalized system where maybe the response times just aren't as important. Um, and so as we give up some of those, I don't wanna call them safety blankets, but we have that, you know, the back road, we know where an ambulance is gonna be here in eighteen minutes. Um, you're getting a higher level of care, you know, you're an extension of the of the physician instead of having to go all the way to Rockland or Belfast, or Rockwood or Belfast to see a physician sit in the ER for, you know, an extended period of time, because they're just as busy. Um, we may be able to help the the community like that. So, regionalization is, I think, is is the buzzword, um that we're looking at. Like I said, we're already ahead of that, because we are regionalized. Our four towns already saw that years ago, um with Canada First Aid, um I was fortunate enough to be a part of that for ten years. And so this is nothing new to us, uh, in this area. Um, some folks are really struggling with that idea. Asian wide, Asian wide, yeah.
Other questions? Yes, Steve?
Well, first of all, thank you very much for what you do. I've been unfortunately involved twice in the last year, and both were turned out pretty good.
Yes.
Um, what's the history of the old first responder program and how it, is that just a gone, bygone thing at this place?
Nope, um, it's still still being discussed, um, there's been some renewed interest in it. Um. There are mixed feelings on it. Um, you know, certainly the report came out, um, from, uh, that was done by Rockport Camden, the study that was done, um, where first responders were recommended in in areas where we have pretty darn good response time. Um, so the discussions just need to be had as to the value, the value versus expense. Um, you know, this area was very fortunate for a number of years. Um, unfortunately, as as EMS has gotten away from that volunteer setting, um you don't have the folks in town that just had a drop of a dime, go out on a, on a call. Um, you know, certainly something to look at for maybe, you know, to incorporate with the fire department, working with us and and doing an integrated program, if that was something that was interested uh by the town. Um, I certainly would not shy away from that. First responders certainly have a place, they absolutely have a place, um.
I happen to be one up here in Lincolnville. Many years ago.
Many years ago.
Many moons ago. Um, the only other question I had was on one of your slides, um, it just was, I found it interesting, you you administer fentanyl. A lot of fentanyl, a lot of fentanyl, I just do. You refer me with, that's a common drug, I guess, used to treat things?
It is, um, it's a, it's a fantastic pre-hospital medication for analgesic, uh, for pain management.
Okay.
Um, you know, it's, while we do have a tiered response to pain management now, where it's, okay, cold pack, and then we look towards IV acetaminophen, which was added to our protocols this year. So you're actually gonna see some of that fentanyl maybe drop, and acetaminophen come in, come up, um, in favoritism there. Um, fentanyl used in appropriate dosing is fantastic for managing pain, particularly for folks who have fallen on a broken hip, an ankle, a joint, any joint, um, or a long bone. Um, very quick onset, very fast onset, and the best part of it, we can reverse it. So we are, we also carry naloxone, as we saw, we gave a fair amount of that as well, um opioids, and while it is a an epidemic here in the in the country, we obviously don't wanna add to that, which is why we started introducing things like acetaminophen and those types of medications. Um, but it is commonly used, um, especially in trauma, that's probably where it gets used the most. And the 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 patient always has final say. Um, we always try to take that into consideration before we just. Um we always try to take that into consideration before we just administer it, um because there are folks that are sensitive to it, there are folks that are, are recovered. And we obviously don't wanna introduce something like that again to him, so.
Any other questions for John?
Yeah, just real quick, this broader, broader question. Has Northeast uh ever done or considered uh kind of uh senior check, daily check-ins, as it were? Where, you know, seniors who are taking medication perhaps, uh will call in every morning to say, I'm doing well. Um I know the town of Freeport did that years ago, or still does, I think.
Camden still does it. Um Camden Police Department has the Good Morning Camden program.
Something like that, yeah. Is, is that something Northeast would take on, or is it, doesn't work for you guys?
We could consider it, um but our resources would be, would be pretty tight for us right now. Um not having an administrative assistant.
Yeah, well, somebody's gotta be on the other end of the phone, right?
Yeah, somebody's gotta be on the other end. And our dispatch center is, uh so we have, we have two dispatch centers. Um we have Knox Regional Communications Center, which is our nine-one-one dispatch center. So we're automatically dispatching anytime somebody calls nine-one-one, goes to the nine-one-one center, then we receive it. Our non-emergency side is handled by MedCom, which is a third-party contractor, um which is heavily part of the Northern Lights uh system. Um they dispatch for us uh capital, well, Northern Lights Medical Transport, I was gonna say Capital. It's now Northern Lights Medical Transport, all five of their divisions, as well as Light Fleet. And they are a very busy agency. Um so we would definitely have to look at resources for that. It's not something I would definitely, uh that I wouldn't say no, uh no to. Uh definitely encourage something like that. Um but sometimes those types of things are really great at the grassroots, um you know, having a committee in town that know each other. And just check in, and trying to encourage our neighbors to become part of everybody's lives, like it used to be.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We, we seem to have lost some of that in this digital age, um where just neighbors checking on neighbors and stuff like that.
Yeah, I, I just know that my father-in-law benefited greatly from that in Freeport, and so I did know pro- similar programs were in the area, or if you'd consider it.
It's definitely something that I would consider for, you know, as part of our community paramedic program. I really want to bolster that. That's my next baby focus, is our community paramedicine program where, um you know, if they are taking medications, then maybe the physician or asks us to go out once a week, once a month, to just check in on, make sure they're taking their medications as prescribed, making sure they're getting their refills as they're, as, as necessary. Um and just, you know, pop in, do a set of vital signs, check their house over to make sure it's safe from falls.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then, uh and, and just check on their wellbeing.
I see.
Um you know, that, that's part of that community paramedic program, and that would be where I'd see that fitting.
Okay, gotcha. Thanks.
Thank you so much for all of your time this evening.
No, thank you. I really appreciate your time, and, and thank you for allowing me to present, like.
Oh, no, appreciate it.
As it's, uh, as it has been a lo- quite a while for the, um for our committee meeting, um I really wanna get this information out, our team has been doing some really great work, um making sure that our numbers stay well within the contract and far exceeding the contract, and, and from what I see. Um and making sure that you folks have a face to put with, with, with our service. Um I know, being based out of Scarborough, it's been tough to maintain that local connection, but having lived in Knox County and this, in the outer area, um for as long as I have, about as local as we're around getting right now, so. Um you have somebody in Rockport, if you ever have any questions, concerns, um David has my contact information. He knows how to get ahold of me twenty-four hours a day, so if there is a problem, question, anything you wanna pass on, please reach out. I'm available literally twenty-four hours a day, um not just through nine-one-one, so.
Wonderful. Sure, yeah?
Yeah, just a quick question. Do you feel that your hub in Rockport, you, you feel that you, that the towns, you and the towns would benefit more if your hub was more in the center of the four? Instead of being on the office, on the end of one of them?
Not necessarily. I mean, I, I've worked out of both systems, um where I've been, you know, like I said, I worked for Camden First Aid for nine, almost ten years. And we were in the center, I mean, you couldn't get much more centered than the, the corner of Simonson, and then Simonson corner, right?
Yeah.
Um there are benefits to being on that outside. You have other options for routes. Um you have the, other options for taking the back roads. Um if we happen to know that the construction's really bad in this area, we could shoot out Route ninety and then up. Plus, the proximity of the hospital um is really important to us, um just getting back in service. Um we leave the hospital to get medications or clean our truck. If we truly destroy our truck, um maintaining, you know, care for our patient, we can be back and grab a spare truck within two minutes. Um so there's, there's trade-offs. I think there's definite trade-offs operationally. Um you know, would it have been nice to have built a, a building on the, the old Mill property? Maybe. Um it certainly would've, would've benefited from the con- the congestion side of things. But getting to and from is still just as bad, depending on where you're heading, so.
Thank you.
Thank you again so much for all your time.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anything else, David?
Nope.
Okay. Um moving along, we have a tabled conversation regarding a land lease for float storage for Lake City Floats. And we do have a representative here from Lake, um from Lake City Floats. Uh does anyone have any questions?
I don't.
I don't either, and so would someone care to make a motion, please?
I move to authorize the town administrator to sign an agreement on behalf of the town that allows the use of town-owned property for float storage by Lake City Floats on essentially the same terms as last year.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Thank you all very much, and thank you for your patience.
Uh I have one question.
Oh, yeah, please come up to the podium.
Well, no, Kern just said essentially.
Yep, yep, yeah, sorry, come up to the podium.
I thought you said essentially the same term, so I just wanna make sure that was.
I was told to use that word.
That, that in essence means we're gonna change the dates to be for the coming year.
But nothing to do with the blue styrofoam on us, any of that sort of stuff, okay.
Nope, we've had recommendations from um Lakes and Ponds Committee and yes, so, no.
End work here, not from you.
Yep.
Perfect.
But thank you.
Yeah, of course, all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you'll email me days and?
Yep, I'll update that, and it'll be in the works.
Perfect. Thank you, thank you everybody.
Make your plans.
Thank you. Um does anyone mind if I take a quick bathroom break?
No, no.
You can take it, Kern, if you want to.
I'm all set, and we'll take up.
Okay, I'll be right back. I'll be quick.
A little stretch here.
I'll be the first responder. The first responder days, I remember it. I don't wanna go back to it. I never mind. I'll do some calls. Oh, man, it's bad. Afterwards, I'll tell you, uh it is, get something. That's when I started to, like, uh, yeah, I'll tell you after, yeah, it's bad.
Never much in the suns, have you, David?
It's not too rude, I still. Yeah, I've seen a lot, you've uh, at all times, 'cause I've got all the things bothering me, you know.
I've seen a lot.
And I think it's, yeah, and I think it's uh because I know a lot more people than you. And this, uh.
Yeah. I wouldn't last a day without chocolate.
No, yeah. Especially after you've had kids.
Ah, that's better.
Yeah, I get it.
Okay, I know David's outside, but um so the next agenda item was a request from Selectman Garrettson. Um so I don't know if we wanna table it until when he can be present. I do know that there is a deadline for this grant, but I guess what I would say is that um despite it being a very excellent idea, worthy of a conversation, it's worthy of um the conversation and the process, and that perhaps um if Selectman Garrettson is interested in pursuing it, that we fold this into a conversation with our other budget items so that we can have a really thoughtful, thorough, well-executed plan.
Makes sense, yeah.
All right, so moving along from that, uh before we can move on our next agenda items, we first need a motion.
I move that we suspend our meeting as the Board of Selectmen, and that we convene as the Board of Assessors.
So moved?
Seconded.
Seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? And we have a first abatement.
I move that as his business was closed prior to April first, the board grant abatement number two zero two two dash zero three to Donald Hill Junior in the tax amount of ninety-eight dollars and ninety-one cents.
So moved?
Seconded.
Seconded. Uh any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Thank you all very much, and we have a second uh farmland withdrawal penalty commitment.
I move the board approve and sign the farmland withdrawal penalty commitment for Sunrise, Sunraise Investments LLC in the tax amount of one thousand nine hundred and one dollars eighty-seven cents with a due date of October twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, and interest to begin on November eleventh, twenty twenty-two, on any unpaid tax.
So moved?
Seconded.
And seconded. Any discussion?
So where, where is this property?
Solar farm.
Okay, that's what I thought it.
They're the, they're the people that leased the land that had previously been in the farmland program, but farming the sun doesn't qualify for the farmland program, so the, the land had to be removed from farmland.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? And a final motion to continue our business.
Move that we adjourn our, our meeting as the Board of Assessors and reconvene as the Board of Selectmen.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you all very much. And we need to set some public hearing dates. Uh there's a suggestion of the twenty-sixth of September. Does anyone have any questions? And if not, can I have a motion?
Uh I move that the board conduct a public hearing regarding winter road closings at six-thirty PM on September twenty-sixth, two thou- two thousand twenty-two.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Thank you all very much, and we have a final meeting to set.
I move the board conduct a public hearing regarding the general assistance ordinance maximums at six-thirty PM on September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Thank you all very much. And moving along, the Central Main Power Company has submitted an application for a utility pole location. Uh does anyone have any questions for our town administrator?
I have one thing I'd like to chime in on. In your packet actually had two permit applications, but there's only one motion. Um as of Friday, after the packet got started, but before the newsletter got done, CMP uh contacted us regarding the second application in there to say that the homeowner had decided to do something different and didn't need the permit. We didn't, we didn't rip those out of the pages, so.
Okay. Uh would someone care to make a motion that clarification?
I move the board approve and sign the location permit CMP work order number eight zero one zero 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 four seven three five six five for new poles to be located adjacent to North Park Town Road.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you all very much. And do we have a broadband update? From the broadband committee.
Um the only update would be that we're hoping to have the um representatives uh appointed by the board to meet with um Tiger or Telecom in the near future.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions received? All right. And Kern, do you have an update for us?
I do not.
Uh Mike, do you have an update for us?
No, I don't.
Steve, any other updates?
No.
And I have none. So we have the treasurer and payroll warrants to approve and sign.
I move the board approve and sign the treasurers and payroll warrants.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Uh any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And if there is no other business the board needs to attend to, I will entertain a final motion.
I move that we adjourn.
Seconded.
Moved, that was so gently put forth. Moved and seconded. Uh any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you all very much.
All, all good things gotta end, right?
Was it August? It'll bug.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, file.
Oh, boy. Keep your pens out.
Yeah, sign here, okay.